I'd like to call the January 24th meeting to order. Could you all please rise, for your allegiance?
For your allegiance, to the Lord, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like Pastor David Fettis from Family of Faith Church to do our invocation.
Lord, we do confess that we are under God, and we pray that as we meet together tonight, you will bless each one here with your wisdom and your insight. We thank you, Lord, for the orderly system of government, for those who lead this village, for the mayor and trustees, for those who are administrators and serve in various capacities of managing the budget and law enforcement. We pray, Lord, that you will help each one, whether they're in public works or working in an office or making decisions, to have your wisdom and have a sense of responsibility to you and to the people of the village. And we pray, Lord, for the people of Moni that they can prosper under your blessing, that they can enjoy good health and live as citizens of this village and citizens of your kingdom. We praise you, Father, that all life and breath comes from you. We pray now that this meeting will be blessed with your presence and your wisdom, that the decisions made here will be for the good of the people of the village and that you will guide the discussions. We pray in the name of Jesus, the Lord and Savior.
Amen.
Amen.
At this time, I know David is going to adjust the volume. When we tested it with the gentleman, it was nothing like what just there. Hopefully, he'll be okay now. Roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Here.
Trustee Holston?
Present.
Trustee Horn?
Here.
Trustee Raisik?
Present.
And trustee Vincent?
Here.
I'd like to mention to the trustees at this time that when you do speak, you have to hold your button down and then release it when you're done speaking. Otherwise, it will not work, okay? Thank you very much. We can set it up differently and at a different date if you wish to have it on all the time like mine is. Okay, so open to the public, agenda items only. Please come forward.
I like what you've done to this. I really like it because it gets an opportunity to see people eye to eye. I know we've got their back to us. Thank you for doing this. The last time I was here, we inaugurated Jimmy, so it really looks very nice.
Thank you.
I'd like to address my comments to item number two under the attorney's report. But before I do, I want to make sure before I make a fool of myself.
Brian, would you put a record, tell us who you are?
Brian Kahn, Brian's Place, 25--
He's gonna turn you on, Brian.
All right, now your mic is working.
Brian Kahn, Brian's Place, 25665 South Governor's Highway.
Thank you.
But before I address my comments to this particular item, are you planning to add to the beer and wine license numbers? Is that what you're gonna do with licenses? Are you planning on or talking about adding less than Class A licenses, like beer and/or beer and wine?
That is, that is the ordinance that is on. It's to develop a new class of license.
Okay.
As what's before this board on the agenda that you referenced.
Okay. Then my comments are appropriate, then. Yet another Moni gambling parlor in the making and less than a Class A liquor license location. Class A liquor licenses throughout the state were to be the only intended establishments to receive video gaming licenses. However, in this money-hungry and horribly indebted state of Illinois, the politicians found a way to proliferate this newfound stream of revenue. We now see video gaming terminals in several types of venues, from laundromats to hair salons. All you need is a beer or beer and wine license from your friendly liquor commissioner, and you're in business with limited overhead and enough space for five chairs. Within 13 miles of this location, there are 192 video gaming machines in five communities. Moni has 44 of them. The 44 machines in Moni produce roughly $12,000 a month and $8,800 in machine license fees annually. My business personally contributes $24,000 a year to Moni. I'm usually third out of nine vendors. The truck stops always beat me because they're open more than I am, and I'm gonna talk to you about that later on. But anyway, the truck stop TA, they contribute about $3,600 a month to Moni. So it's around $36,000 to $40,000 a year, or around $60,000 for two vendors out of the nine. This revenue line item you never had before video gaming was legalized. Now it seems like the different villages, including Moni, want to capitalize and exploit this new area of revenue opportunity at the expense of incumbent Class A licenciaries who have been here for decades. I'm talking about Mike Lean, Frankie, myself. Even though Maryland's has changed hands, they've been here for quite some time. The previous mayor and I had conversations about this very subject. He assured me that only two of these kinds of businesses would be allowed in the village. Now either he lied to me or this administration is changing the rules and, as it be, the ordinances. I'm not so concerned about my business or what I might lose. What I'm concerned about is what you, the village board, is letting yourselves in for. If you allow one more video game parlor in Moni, get ready for an onslaught of other applications for a wine and/or a wine beer license. Paul next door to me has a facility that could easily accommodate a deli, probably Couscous, and an eating area where beer could be served, where five poker machines could be installed. Paul has a space north of his business location. I'm talking about Liquor Depot. Paul has a business location next door that he hopes to rent out to a barbecue restaurant. Don't you think they might want a new license that allows them to serve beer and wine? Five poker machines. Dr. Sheets across the street is talking about putting in a wine bar on the north end of his building. If he gets that license, the special license you're talking about, five more poker machines. And what about my own business? I could turn that pavilion into a pool hall, put another bar in there, put in a couple of hot dog machines, five poker machines. And the building to the south of me, Jim has that building leased out to Napa, but he also has a south end of that building that he could turn into a facility as well. Matter of fact, Black Hawk Restaurants out of Chicago are interested in that facility. I don't know if they've talked to anybody here, but Jim had the opportunity to lease it out two years ago, but he didn't. What about Sicilian Joe's? What if they decide they want to put in a liquor license, get a liquor license for beer and wine, and put in five poker machines? And of course, how about Mark out at Chooch's? There's a facility out there that we might think about, too. And what about the Chinese restaurant? I think they already have a liquor license, though, don't they? If I'm not mistaken. But anyway, are you gonna tell us all, though, if we come to you, come to the board and say, "We want a beer and wine license," so we can, for the, oh, it's gonna be for poker machines? So you're, and from what I understand, Paul was told by the previous administration that he couldn't have such a license because there were only two to be had, and they were already taken. So apparently, the old administration made a decision to limit the video game parlors to two. With your decision to amend the liquor licensing, I think you're gonna be looking at a lot more poker machines if that's what you want in the village. I thank you for letting me talk to you, and I'm sure you'll make the right decision. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Anyone else open to the public? Okay, move on to the consent agenda. Need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to clerk's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a report tonight. I just wanted to let you all know, bringing the reports in front of the board, looking at the current ordinance of 1685 regarding solicitors peddlers, which is known as a transient merchant license or permit. Wanted to mention that for consideration for possible amendment. As I've looked into it shortly after being sworn in, I spoke to the administrator briefly about it back then. This past summer, there was pretty chaotic when it came to the criminal activities surrounding, in the surrounding communities, with other companies going door to door, as well as here. Residents took to social media in their concern because of different ones wanting to know if they were scammers or legit. And currently, what we have in place, there is a $1,000 fee, but it's open-ended as far as the timeframe throughout the end of the year. And while that amount was created to be a deterrent, there's still some things that I feel are lacking from the ordinance that could help. And with that, of course, I'm just proposing that maybe we can incorporate not just having a one-time fee for the year and have it open-ended, but maybe do a daily fee per person, per company, as well as having a background check also to further ensure its safety. Now, they also have, would be able to have the identification provided by the village to ensure that the public are, you know, that they are aware that they are approved, so when someone's going door to door, knocking on the door, they can see something that shows the village has approved this person. Therefore, it would, you know, have them feeling a little more comfortable with those that are there, knowing who should be there, who shouldn't be there. I have actually contacted a few surrounding villages to see what they have in place. Two of the villages have the police department actually run this and not their village. As a result, the background checks are able to be done. They do the applicant, the fee. They also have fingerprints that are done with their background checks. And once approved, the information goes to the chief to be approved or denied. And once they are complete with the timeframe, they designate, you know, to have that available. And all is gone well without incident, then they receive half of what they paid back in the mail in the form of a check. The third village that I contacted, they limit them to six days consecutively, period, throughout the year, whatever six they want to do, and that's it. They cannot reapply to the following year. And so I spoke to our chief briefly about this, and he's off on the identification portion, as well as the fee proposed. However, he feels that with the current workload, it may be a bit much for the ladies to try and tackle that right now, currently what they're doing. So, but he's not, of course, close to the idea. So I just wanted to just reiterate again, I thought about having the additional daily fee of the $50 instead of just having it for the one year. And then also, if we can implement the background checks and fingerprinting, which, that, of course, lasts for six months, so they'd have to reapply after. And if it's currently, right now, it is currently in force by our police. However, it's done here at the village instead of being strictly done through the police. And then also them having a badge in the form of maybe a letterhead and a plastic leaflet just to sure, you know, ensure our residents that these people are legit to be here. So I just wanted to bring it up to be looked into in the hopes of being on the agenda for future meetings or something.
Thank you very much, Anisha. We'll move on to the mayor's report. I have nothing on my agenda. So we'll go to the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On my report, item H1 is on the agenda, and that is a request for architectural services. Attached to the proposal is a proposal from Oliveri Brothers Incorporated to provide architectural services. And that would be for the purpose of the remaining buildout of the village hall. As you can see on their proposal, we would be utilizing tasks zero, one, and three at this point. And that would provide us an overall vision as to what it's going to take to finish that remaining portion of the project. If we decide to move forward with it and that it is beyond the scope of internal operations as far as doing the work, then we could employ tasks four and five, which would put together a bid process and some HVAC and electrical and plumbing component as well with that. So at this point, all staff is requesting is that you allow the administrator enter into a contract for professional services from Oliveri Brothers in the amount of $3,980.
That being said, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Or a second?
I'll say it.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have a comment. So when we, when this room was built out, was the, you're talking about the hallway, correct?
Yes, sir.
From this point forward, all the way out the front doors.
So was that not included in the original plans or was it always a two-phase process?
It was never included. It was never discussed.
Any other discussion? If not--
Do we keep those new doors up?
Roll call, please.
Question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Just want to clarify with attorney, we don't have the business?
No, sir. It's architectural and is less than $25,000.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next item, H2 on the agenda, is for a water test well. And as part of the process for a new village water well and water tower and pump station for water, potable water, there needs to be a test well drilled to provide certain information as part of the IEPA loan. Attached is a memo from Robinson Engineering, who is our engineering on this specific project, regarding the IEPA loan and the status. And it is recommending that the village front the money for the test well at an estimated cost of $150,000 and seek reimbursement from that money as part of the IEPA loan once it is approved. By doing this, the cost of the test well now, the village will save approximately six to eight months on the entire process of moving the, a regular well forward, bringing forward the pump house and things of that nature. So what we're proposing is to support that and front that test well drilling in an effort to keep this project moving along. Our concern is now and always has been with the condition of our smaller water tower, 50,000 gallon water tower, and the need for some maintenance on the 500,000 gallon water tower. You know, we need to move this process along as quickly as possible. I would like to note that this amount is allocated in the current budget, and therefore, we make that recommendation, seeking a motion to authorize the drilling of a test well in an approximate cost of $150,000.
Have a motion, please?
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. I couldn't resist. But will we get all of that money back to the loan?
As it stands right now, we would plan to receive all that money back. And I only say as it stands right now because the government is the government. They have changed the application process once already on us. We have been able to accommodate that and still keep our application alive and moving forward. And, but with all honesty, we pose that same question to our engineers, and we feel that very strongly that that portion will always remain reimbursable.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
And trustee Holston?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And just a couple of other items I'd like to report on is that our demolition process as part of 6010 Industrial Drive, which everyone would know as the former Aunt Martha's Building, is moving forward. We had talked about demolition of the campy property that the village owned and how we received discounted pricing with the demolition of the old Aunt Martha's property. So that will be moving along, weather permitting, and we will be taking advantage of that reduced pricing. Additionally, I would just like to report that I attended this last, I think it was two weeks ago now, Crisis Leadership and Decision Making. This was presented out in Manhattan, and it really has to do with emergency management and just as it said, crisis leadership and decision making. And it was a very interesting, very informative class, and I was able to bring much information back here that we'll incorporate into our own local EMA as that gets moving again. And last but not least, I am sorry to report and late to report that our website is down, if you have not noticed that. It is down. We are working to get a page up explaining the process and exactly what is taking place in an effort to also provide our online bill pay services back. It was a current, our current website manager and the website host had some issues with the backup and the website itself, and therefore, it went down, and it is unable to be brought back up in its current state. So we are working diligently to get something back on the air for the citizens of Moni.
Question?
That is unretrievable. Currently, it is unretrievable. However, there has been work done and progress made to retrieve some of that information. But I would believe that in the very near future, staff will be making a presentation to this board for a new website design in totality. And that does conclude my report. Thank you.
Don't turn my mic off. You could hear me breathing with this thing, so I do turn it off. And I gave, before, we just left it on, and it was just fine. But at least the system's not squawking and not working, okay? It's just the mayor that's not doing right. Attorney's report, Larry?
Wait a minute. What's about this?
Oh, about the 334. My eyes are going, too, I guess. I'm sorry. Public Works, trustee Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things tonight. Just once again, as far as the safety of public works, gentlemen who are out there following the streets when it does snow, hopefully you don't have tomatoes left. They would just ask, and the villagers would, too, to have your cars removed so we can get it all cleaned up and so we don't get phone calls that, you know, we missed an area because we had to go around the car. It's just a common courtesy. Again, just please, if you can, get your cars up the driveway. Also, too, when the Gibson Trail being open, please be courteous. I get it, it's smooth. You don't lean to right or left, but there is still a speed limit of 25 miles an hour. Try to please abide by that and don't think that it's the express lane trying to get, instead of going down 50 out to Moni Manhattan Road. Just, again, it's just a caution issue, especially a morning like we had this morning with all the ice and heavy things. Just please be safe out there and be courteous. End of report.
And as to chief. Chief, did we have an accident in there? A little fender bender?
That's a good question, Your Honor. I don't have the answer.
Actually, you're fired. That'll be today. He's a great chief. I believe we did. The problem is, if you're not used to it, myself included, when you enter it, if there's a car on it already, they have the right of way, okay? You have to wait. And that's something to get used to. But I like it myself. But anyway, end of comment. Let's move on to Parks and Recs. Trustee Vincent?
Thank you. We are going to have a team forum on Friday, February 9th, from 7 to 9. It's for students ages 13 to 17 who live in Moni. We're gonna be asking for suggestions on teen programs and ideas that they have in the upcoming year. It'll be a fireman's park building, and it's free. Parks and Recs also has two contests coming up. The first one is guess the number of candy hearts. The jar of candy hearts is in the hallway, and hopefully, nobody's ate them. It's for ages 12 and under, and the deadline to enter is February 14th or until the hearts are gone. The next one is the snowman contest. It's for ages 5 to 15. You send in a picture of your perfect snowman to the village hall, and you need to send the picture in by February 23rd. End of report.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Move on to finance. Trustee Holston?
So I'm not allowed to come to the team forum? Never mind.
You can go. You can bring a guest.
Thank you. Finance committee meeting was held on Monday, the 22nd. We reviewed the 2018 budget status. We're forecasting it will be at 66% of expense and revenues at the end of the third quarter, which is just almost exactly where we should be. There are no expected revenue or expense variations that would raise a red flag. We also asked the staff to validate Dollar General sales tax revenue because that's one in particular that we've had since this year only. And we'd like to see what that does so that we can use that in our planning for 2019. And they are going to do that and compare that to a year ago revenue to see what the difference on sales tax revenue looks like. We reviewed the 2019 budget and process, not the budget itself. The objective is, the staff intends to have the budget ready to present to the finance committee by the end of January. The finance committee will review the budget initially at the first meeting on February 12th. I would remind the trustees that any of the trustees, as well as the public, of course, are welcome to come on that meeting. It will be held February 12th at 4 o'clock. There is also a meeting on February 26th, scheduled for 4 o'clock. We may have to change that because I think I have to get my wife to the airport that day. March 12th, 4 o'clock. March 26th, 4 o'clock. And April 9th, 4 o'clock. The intent here is to have the final budget approved by the end of this year and approved before next year starts so that we can start the new year, May 1st, with an approved budget, which is something I'm not sure we've ever done in recent history at least. So that is the intent. We are on the process there. And at this point, we feel pretty good about that. Other business. Kevin Daly presented information on a new project that's being considered tonight. General information, we'll have more specifics tonight. And then trustee Horn requested clarification on one item on 2018 for the Jazz Festival relative to, can that be accrued if it's not spent 2018? And the finance committee agreed, and so did the village director of finance, that we could do that along with anything else that might come up with a major expense. And trustee Blue made a good comment on that that we probably will make sure we specify on accruals specifically what it is for. End of report.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to commend the finance committee. Daryl Butner, our director of finance and our administrator for their diligence on getting this all done, prepared for the trustees. We've been in the loop, too. And we are way ahead of the game, and that's a good thing. So, thank you, trustee Holston. We'll move on to economic development. Trustee Blue?
Economic development team are working very, very hard, but we have no opportunity.
That's almost unbelievable. Thank you, Janet. Move on to Building Services. Trustee Horn?
No report tonight, Mayor.
Move on to Public Safety. Anthony Razak?
Got a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Number one, in an effort to reduce the number of traffic complaints in Amazon, the Moni Police Department has enacted a strict enforcement policy in the area. This has resulted in over 200 citations being issued in January already. The number of complaints has gone down because of it. And finally, the police department would like to thank Superintendent Frizzell and his Public Works crew for a great job during our recent inclement weather. While other communities are being buried with accidents during snow and ice events, Moni has had minimal problems. Great job. End of report.
Very much, Anthony. Move on to the Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got four items for the Board's consideration. The first item is an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter III, Section III relative to speed limits. We changed the speed limits for certain streets set forth in the ordinance for the Board to view and consideration.
Need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. No discussion. Rule call, please.
Trustee Racing?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Ordinance number?
1826.
It was 1826.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item for the Board to view and consideration is an ordinance amending Title III, Section VI and VII relative to liquor licenses. This ordinance, as early discussed, would create a separate classification, which we call Classification E. The restrictions and qualifications are set forth in the ordinance along with a proposed annual fee. It's up for the Board to view and consideration.
Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
There's a second. Discussion.
I think there's some concerns here with this proposal of expansion of our liquor license or creating this new category specifically with that property. I know parking is a premium already, and I see that as an issue. Perhaps a bigger issue is the question of how many of our, how many games or how many licenses are enough, and as a board, we have to come to terms with that. When we put this, the different licenses together a couple of years ago, we cited on two gaming parlors, and we imposed a $5,000 licensing fee. And in part, that was to protect our existing businesses, our existing taverns. And I think we should continue to do that to protect them and let them have that slice of business.
I have a question for Mr. Wallace. So is this?
Janet, is your mic on?
Yes.
Can you hear, can you hear okay? I didn't think so.
They're turned down tonight because she's six inches away.
Okay. So my question was, is this new class of license, is this for one particular business? Are we talk, because Mr. Trustee Horn talked about parking, is it for one particular business or is it, is it something else?
This is a new class of license that is proposed before the Board. It is not assigned to any particular business at this point. It just is before this Board, a request was made. There is no existing class that would cover the request. Therefore, we brought it before the Board. The attorney, the attorney was authorized to draft the ordinance, and this ordinance is specific to an operation but not to a business.
We should be aware that for this class, no more than one license shall be issued in effect at one time. This will be amended for the new license if this does get passed.
We can, we can change that at will. Absolutely. But if one, basically, we're talking about packaged liquor stores. There's two packaged liquor stores in town. If one has one, there's no reason why we would deny the other one to have one.
Mr. Mayor?
David?
I was not at the last meeting because I was on holiday in Florida, which was very warm. Stop. You're welcome. But I did actually watch the entire video of the meeting the next day and saw most of the conversations that took place. I had a couple of conversations earlier this week with people here on the administration regarding this, and then last night, decided that I would go out actually to those five of the six sites that were listed that Mr. Wallace and you presented at the last meeting. And I actually did go out around 10 o'clock last night with my wife. It was a nice night for a ride.
Excuse me, David, so people understand, these were different communities that have this already.
Yeah.
Okay? Not five or six that exist here, okay?
We went to, no, I was working that direction, so I'm sorry. We went to Bridgeview, to Burbank, and to Oakmont, and with five of the six, we found the sixth one we just gave up because we were tired. But all between, we got to the first one around 10 o'clock. Between 10 and 11, all of them were closed. I say that because the one unique thing about the liquor license is, I would assume that we'll make sure this is in the documentation here, when the liquor store closes, they have to close. And when they close, there's no reason to have the gaming open. So they were all closed. There was no gaming going along. I believe in Moni, the time for liquor stores to close is 10 o'clock. Is that correct? There are times for the liquor stores to close?
I believe so, sir.
They set the pattern that I've noticed. Brian, you probably know that better than I do. But I believe it's 10 o'clock, so they would, they would not be there after 10 o'clock, people in those gaming. And what I, what I, what seems to be the case in those, and by the way, I agree with Trustee Horn, my observation of five, all five of those locations with the parking lots were much, much bigger than the parking lot we see over at this particular place. I am concerned about that. I think that's something that the administration code officials should look at. With Gracie's Barito right next door there, their parking lot is full quite often, and I'm not sure how much more traffic they can handle. I know the issue of the ADA restrooms were discussed as well, and I'm sure that will be taken into account. Mr. Khan raises a good question as to, are we going to go there? That's really what he's saying. Are we going to go there? Are we going to go to the next step, which a lot of other villages are going to? My personal opinions on gambling set aside, I think we have to look at Moni itself and the kind of village we're becoming in terms of size. We're seeing a lot of growth here. I think we're going to see more growth. It needs to be controlled growth. You have to, I think you raised a good question that we probably ought to discuss possibly in committee and then come back and discuss in further detail. How much further do we want to go in gaming? How much further do we want to go in liquor licenses? What if somebody else wants to come in and open up a liquor store here in town? What if somebody else wants to come open another bar? We can't really say we're not going to accept any more because we're growing and we're going to need more. People want grocery stores, they also want liquor stores. They want restaurants, they want these things. So the growth is going to be there, and we're going to have to accept that. What the philosophical question here is, are we going to accept having gaming machines in liquor stores? Right now, we have two liquor stores in town, one of which is asking for a license that stands to reason. I would agree with the person who said, Trustee Horn, I believe we'll probably end up with the other place getting a license as well. The competitive issue aside, you wonder how much the market will bear. When I came back home last night at 11:30, I drove by the two gaming establishments here in town to see how they were doing. One of them had one person in it, the other person had one person in. So, you know, they don't appear to be lighting up the storm. Now, the revenue speaks for itself in terms of what the potential revenue is. I'm sure the revenue that comes from the restaurant gaming comes because there are good restaurants that have customers in there for food, and when they're done eating, they go to the machine and play a couple. That's what my general observation has been when I'm in the restaurants. I would assume the same thing will happen with the liquor store. Somebody's going to go in there to buy a bottle to take out or whatever and want to go over to the machine. I have heartburn with them selling wine or beer by the drink, just because I think that's a bad practice. But if it's allowed at the other ones, I assume it's going to be allowed there. And I don't know that we can do that. I think the state of Illinois made a big mistake on that one. But I do also think that if other liquor stores in the area have gaming machines, the ones here in town have the same right to do the same thing, we want them to be competitive as well. So I will go along with this motion, although I have some reservations about several parts of it, and particularly the parking.
I would like to just respond, David, to the power of the beer and wine, that's the state law. They have to serve it, okay?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. Trustee Holston, just to clarify, you had a question on the hours of operation. The current liquor license is a Class C license at that particular location for packaged goods, and the hours of operation are from 6:30 in the morning until 1:00 a.m. the following day. That is Monday through Saturdays. And on Sundays, it's 10 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. the following day. That is strictly for packaged goods. The other comment I would like to make is the ordinance before you, I see does not bear any hours of operation, and that could certainly be set at the pleasure of this Board.
Then... Then I have some concerns with the state law.
And that's exactly why I indicated that the hours of operation in this ordinance are lacking. I think we're looking for some direction from the Board. If a license of this nature is to be issued, then what are the hours of operation that the Board is, feels that they would authorize?
I thought I had asked that last week, and we had hours. I, at the last meeting, I thought I had asked, and there was, I don't... Something about weekdays being nine and weekends being 11. I...
But you may want to consider, you don't have to amend the ordinance, you can just put in the application when they apply. When they file the application with the village, you say the hours of operation will be eight or whatever they're going to be, and that will be set forth in your liquor license.
Yes, I may say, I'm sorry, you're down there.
I am now.
We keep talking about other villages. When this gaming came up six years ago, we had two trustees who were totally against it. But yet, our finances in this town has, I wouldn't say boom, but has absolutely helped this town get to where we are now and hopefully go forward. All right, I'm sorry. I don't know how many Jones and Ladies went to actual haunts and spoke with them. I was there last night because when we spoke about this two weeks ago, piece of paper doesn't tell me anything. I want to see a visual. I walked through with Joe, who's sitting in our ordinance tonight. He showed me where the gaming was going to be. We did talk about the bathrooms, as Trustee Holston brought up about the ADA. You know, we talked about, there's a door there that hasn't been open in six years. I don't know how long you've had the store actually. It was 8:30 at night, and there was two cars in the parking lot. I guess where Lucky Barito gets pretty crowded, but as far as I know, they were not planning on staying open until 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning just for the games. They weren't looking to change the license. What they're looking to do is grow in this town. They're looking to stay here. My opinion, I'm just saying, you know, they are trying everything. They're not trying to do anything behind anybody's back. They're actually coming to us saying, here's what we want to do. Okay? And Brian has a good point. I mean, he, he's concerned about his business, okay? As, as Mulligan should be in the village, and whoever's running was Maryland. Everybody should be concerned about their business. You know, he brings up Dr. Sheets. We don't know what Dr. Sheets is going to do. Dr. Sheets has his main thing right now. I, I don't think that we should be turning down somebody who wants to try to grow in our village and stay in our village on a technicality of hours. We brought Amazon out. We, they're bringing people in left and right. They're coming in, they're buying stuff, running to Lucky Barito, the liquor store, to Taco Bell. Money's coming into this town. We want to try to keep what we have in this town going. And if they're asking to grow a little bit, I don't see why we should be like, no, just because, you know, again, not a personal thing, but I don't like to do gaming. I don't like parking. If somebody wants to grow in this town, I think we should, you know, if it's not out of the ordinary, try to help them along.
Any other discussion?
I just want, I have some...
A copy of their business license we were given two weeks ago, and the business license says Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 9 to 9, Friday, 9 to 11, Saturday, 9 to 11, and Sunday, 10 to 8. I had assumed those were going to be the hours, that they were going to be open and for gaming, too.
I would agree with that. I was just merely making it known that the, this Board has the option to place hours of operation within the ordinance.
And so, and so, once again, this isn't granting anybody the authority to go ahead and put gaming machines and sell wine. This is a class, this is a license that we're agreeing to move forward, and then whoever wants to apply for that license would apply for it, and they would have to meet all the criteria such as ADA and parking and all of that. So this isn't about that individual. This is about agreeing that we would, we would agree that this license is acceptable. End of call.
One other thing, I'm sorry, I didn't mention this, when I spoke with Joe last night, the way they were going to set it up, they absolutely had planned and started sitting on the east side as we talked about selling beer or wine, having a booth right there watching his gaming area. Also, where the counter is, they also want to have somebody sitting up there. They're all about security there. They're not just going to let people stroll in, go play a game, and then roam their aisles and leave. They are going to have eyes on both ends of the store. So they are looking forward to the safety issue of who comes into their store, and they are aware of what's going on.
Any other discussion? If not, rule call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
No.
Trustee Racing?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Ordinance number, please?
1827.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1699 relative to the Public Safety and Economic Development Program. In that ordinance, which has been submitted to the Board, we changed the title of the ordinance and also deleted Section 9 relative to facility improvements. Everything else is in full force, and in fact, it's up for the Board to view and consideration.
Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Second? Discussion. No discussion?
Oh, I do, I was just, I'm sorry, just looking at the ordinance a little bit closer. The transaction fee, how much...
The transaction fee, how much is that right now? I believe there's a guideline as how much each one is being charged. I forgot how much is in there presently. The fee would still stay the same, it's just that no one has taken advantage, as far as I know, with respect to using it towards the facilities. I believe the facilities, we indicated for bathroom improvements, I believe landscaping, but the fee would stay in effect, but there, no one has taken advantage of that program. How much is in that line item currently?
The amount that is held aside, yes, currently that fee is distributed amongst... Daryl, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's police and EMA. And the third portion of that, the third, the last third of that, is the part that was held for improvements. And I believe that amount that is in there is approximately forty-five thousand dollars. Is that correct, or twenty-five?
It's split. That was the total amount. We've got about seventeen thousand in the section that's for, you know, improvement.
Improvements, okay, all right. It's seventeen thousand that is currently sitting in there. Okay. Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Racing?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Ordinance number, please.
Eighteen twenty-eight.
Last item is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment note with Dollar General. They obviously developed the store at that site pursuant to the redevelopment agreement. We agreed to reimburse them for certain tithological costs, an amount of three hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars, I believe. No interest is being assessed on this note. Hopefully, it will be paid fairly quickly, given the fact that it was assessed as farmland. Now you have an improved facility. I believe the facility's been open for close to a year. But pursuant to the redevelopment agreement, we are obligated to give them a promissory note, a redevelopment note, which is up for the board's review and consideration.
Motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Racing?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Eighteen twenty-nine.
I have yours.
Have anything under old business?
I got one thing.
Right ahead, Anthony.
One is EMA, I have somebody contacting me, an EMA from another town asking me this.
You'll lumped under item N of the agenda, we have executive session scheduled this evening to discuss that matter. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to new business, draft redevelopment.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before the board, there is a redevelopment agreement, proposed redevelopment agreement with Bailey Ridge Four LLC. The terms of the agreement are basically, Mr. Burke is here tonight on behalf of the developer, they're proposing to construct a facility of roughly nine hundred thousand square foot at Original Avenue and Moni Manhattan Road. It is in the TIF district, it's TIF number six. Mr. Burke and his partners are proposing to have this constructed, I believe, by June of two thousand nineteen. To make it economically feasible, they've asked for TIF reimbursement, or sorry, TIF assistance from the village. Negotiations have been ongoing between Mr. Wallace, Mr. Daly, myself, and Mr. Burke and their representatives. A proposed note would be eighteen million dollars with eighty percent pledge to the development, as a pay-as-you-go. There is no liability from the village's standpoint with respect to any GEO obligation. No interest would be assigned to the note. It would be a spec building, and given their past history, they've always come through before in the past to get a tenant in that facility as soon as possible. I think there's renditions that have been handed out to the board. No action will be taken tonight, but there have been some extensive negotiations for probably three to four months on this issue. Obviously, both sides have conceded certain points with respect to how much TIF reimbursement was, let's say, due and owing. As with everything else, it's been compromises with respect to different TIF costs. But it would be kitty-corner from Amazon, hopefully that will spur development down Original Avenue, and also across, directly across from Amazon. Again, I cannot overemphasize, there is no GEO backing on this, there is no interest being assessed, as compared to before in the past, where interest would be between sixty-seven percent. If we can keep it at eighteen million, projections are, hopefully that note will be paid within, or hope in fifteen to sixteen years, depends on what the new assessed value would be. Mr. Burke would also pay the permit fees as set forth in the annexation agreement agreed upon years ago. Obviously, they'll comply with any and all building code regulations that we'd request, including improving Original Avenue, which is the utmost importance to us. But it's just tonight for the board's review and consideration, get some consensus from the board, and then if the board feels it would be appropriate, we would have it for final review, and hopefully some type of action at the next board meeting.
I just wanted to mention that, don't get scared of these big numbers, please. The negotiations became a little tense. This wasn't done overnight, believe me when I tell you that. The TIF can handle it, or we wouldn't have went along with it. So please keep in mind that the administration here has your interests in mind always, so... David, did you want to say something?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to comment that indeed the negotiations were intense and arduous, to say the least. However, staff, in this presentation, staff does support fully what is before this board, and we would request that, actually, that you at least move to authorize the attorney to draw up an ordinance to adopt this, and it would appear at the next meeting for your consideration.
If you... I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Interstate fifty-seven is becoming the new corridor, and I think that's the one thing we need to keep in mind. I think the administration and Kevin Daly have done a great job of attracting the right type of business growth here. I have a little heartburn with eighty percent, but I also understand the why, and I think some of the other items that were negotiated are probably a good trade-off. We're going to see a lot of growth on this fifty-seven corridor. We're very close, I know, to landing some businesses in existing buildings that are already here in town. We need to have some availability of big box, if you will, facilities, and we also need to do that in order to be able to bring retail in, and I know there's a number of things being worked on in that area as well. So I commend Mr. Wallace, mayor, and Mr. Daly on the work that you've done on this. I'm sure you've negotiated well. LLC's a good company. LFI, excuse me, they used to... LFI's a good company, I've known them for years. I'm a little prejudiced because I managed one of the buildings that they had, but I think that this is positioned as well for the future.
Thank you very much for the comments, David. Any other comments?
Am I looking for a motion, sir?
Where I got it.
And a second roll call.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Racing?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
And Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Hope we got a little smile out of you, Marty.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate that. Open to the public, non-agenda items, whatever you'd like to talk about, please step forward.
Hello, my name is Mike Margret. My address is three six two Charles in Braywood. I'm not here as a resident of the area. I'm here in my capacity as the president of WPAL. WPAL, for anybody who doesn't know, is the public access television station which serves the residents of the village of Moni and of Peatone and of Beecher and of parts or all of the five townships surrounding and between the villages. And I kind of have a three-part thing that I want to address the board about, and this is regarding what was in the last meeting, I believe was agenda item H two in the Administrator's report, and was the item about getting cameras for the boardroom. Now, WPAL has been providing the recording of these meetings and the broadcast of these meetings for, I'd say, at least twenty-five years, if not longer. And I can say certainly that we know more than anybody about what needs to be done and the equipment that would be help, you know, that would be most useful if upgrades are being contemplated. And I have to say that I'm more than disappointed that nobody in the administration, nobody on staff, nobody in the board ever thought maybe, hey, you know, these guys have been our partner in doing this with us for a quarter of a century. Why don't we let them know that we're going to do this? Why don't we get their opinion? Why don't we get their input and see what might be useful? Also, perhaps we could have saved you some money. So that's number one. Now, that being said, you put it out to bid for three companies, from what I understand, only one responded, and they gave you three bids back. So, and if I can summarize from the way I got from the tape, the low end was a single camera, which would have been up, maybe where that security camera is up there, either on the ceiling or on the back wall, which would have been a pan tilt zoom camera. Essentially, it would do what the camera on the tripod there right now is doing, an operator would be able to zoom in on who's talking, would move back and forth, left and right, up and down. And that was somewhere in the neighborhood of six thousand dollars. Then, at the top end, around twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars, was a terrific system, which would have had a camera on that wall over there to catch these board members, camera on this wall over here to catch those board members. So instead of seeing the side of your face when you're talking to each other, we could have actually seen you face on. Would have had that camera back there, so we could see the board there. But importantly, for the twenty-five years, thirty years we've been doing this, anytime somebody addressed the board, a member of the public, or the many presentations you get, all the people at home can see is the back of their head, unless they turn around to address the camera. So if the presentation's being made to you, if the easels are facing you, the people at home can't see what's going on. So that would have provided a camera over there to see, so the people at home can see what you board members are seeing when you're making your decisions and when you're getting input from the public. Would have been done at a very small incremental cost. And yet, to save something like point zero zero four percent of the annual budget of the village, that was shot down, and was knocked back to actually what was the worst of the three options, which was, and again, from what I understood listening to it, two cameras back there. One of them would have been like in the six thousand dollar proposal, which would have done what that tripod camera's doing, the pan tilt and zoom. And one of them would have just sat back there, kind of like a security camera, on a wide-angle shot. And whoever's operating it can operate the pan tilt and zoom or a wide-angle shot. And for just adding the wide-angle shot, it was knocked the price up from that six, seven thousand to about sixteen, seventeen thousand. So for ten thousand dollars, you got a static shot. The worst of all, you know, in terms of value for money, the worst option. And that's what the board went for. All right. So I know that one of the questions that was asked was, is this something we can upgrade later? And sure, you can always add something to it later, but it's kind of like a street widening project. If you know that you're going to want to do something, it makes a lot more sense economically to do it all at once. You're not bringing people back later on to tear up the ceiling again, run different cables, configure your controllers differently, and so on. If you add on to it later, it's going to be more expensive than when you just have it done all at once. It wasn't a great expense, and it would have been something very good for the people to have the top one. If it was all about trying to save a couple thousand dollars in a multimillion-dollar budget, then by far, the better option would have been to go with the base package, with just the one pan tilt zoom camera, because it didn't make much sense to add static camera for a massive increase in cost, more than double. And finally, it was brought up twice, that said, well, we're going to have this upfront expense in doing this, but then they said, but we're going to be saving money, and we're going to have ongoing savings, so to pay for it over time. Well, right now, you're not paying for equipment. You give us a fee to get, you give WPAL a tiny, tiny, tiny fee every year to keep a television station on here twenty-four seven. That gets all your meetings out there, and we're trying to do the committee meetings, and other things for Moni as well. So the equipment is provided by us. There's no labor involved, because Sid Dressback, a great guy here, he volunteers his time to come out and shoot things, and when he can't do it, at least there's a static camera back there in a wide angle that gets it. So you're not going to save money on equipment ongoing, and you're not going to save money on labor ongoing. So I'm assuming when they said there's going to be ongoing savings, and they said would like to put the videos on our Facebook page, that they're thinking, well, maybe, you know, without stating it, they might want to cut the budget for WPAL, that enormous twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars we might be getting. It's taken me, I don't know, ten years of requests to get our budget up by five hundred dollars. So you should know that the meetings not only go on Channel Four, but they go on Facebook, and they go on YouTube. And they're all edited, not for content, but to make sure that there's a slide so that, you know, it identifies as people are watching, they know which meeting it is, and so on. And you don't pay for that. I initiated that as my own project, I've been doing that for something like eight or ten years now. So if you wanted to cut, if the proposed, but not named specifically, ongoing savings were going to be a cut to the almost nothing budget we have, which is five percent, ten percent of what other villages give to their television stations, then you might want to tell the people at home that it's not going to go out over Channel Four anymore. Because it's been a big slap in the face that we can't even get five hundred dollars a year budget increase out of a multimillion-dollar budget, when we're working on a shoestring. But if anybody proposed cutting that, we just wouldn't put it on the air anymore. And so people could get it on Facebook, they wouldn't have it on YouTube unless you also created a YouTube channel for the village, but people wouldn't have it on Channel Four anymore. So just something to keep in mind. The installation hasn't been done yet. I think that you might want to, for your next meeting, reconsider, do the four-camera shot. It would be much better for the village, it would be much better for archival purposes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mention, we are paid to put it on the air on Channel Four and to archive it, which we have done. As a matter of fact, under my stewardship, people can now go back and see any village board meeting, going back to something like two thousand and six, on demand, on our YouTube channel, which is something that was in the history of the station that wasn't done before. But if you're going to keep everything in-house, then you're actually going to wind up paying more in employee time, I can just about guarantee, to have somebody doing what we're doing. Overall, I guess I'd like to close by saying, in the twenty-five-year history of our providing, WPAL providing service to this village, I don't think you've had a better long-term partner in terms of giving you value for money. And if you want to do things that would affect us, I think it would be, and affect our relationship with the village, it would behoove you to reach out. You all got our email address? Phone number? Anybody can call me anytime. And so that's it. I'll be available if anybody wants to talk after the meeting, it depends on how long you're in executive session, but if that's going to go on for an extended time, reach out to me, call me, I will talk with any one of you. I want to make this experience and the service we provide better for the residents of Moni, but we can't do it if we're being cut out.
Anyone else? We're open to the public.
We're open to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mike McKinnon. I'm with Bluestone Single Tenet Properties. We're currently under contract with LFI to purchase the northeast corner of Ridgeland and Moni Manhattan Road, Kitty Corner from the Amazon Distribution Center. We were initially attracted to the site due to the growth that we're seeing within the village that you all are seeing as well. And we saw this as an opportunity to provide service amenities to both the residents and also the workers that are increasingly coming to the site. So right now, my firm is working with Thornton Fuel Centers, which the family operate. They have 190 units, 50 of which are in Chicago now. And they are very interested in developing on the site. And I'll just quickly walk through the site plan, I don't need to bore you with the details, but it's a 6,000 square foot convenience store with a 2,500 square foot restaurant, a drive-through, and it would leave us with a one-acre outline. Through the past year, we've worked with Will County on the access points, and I think that's probably been the point that I really want to focus this discussion on this evening. And I'll let Mr. Wallace bore you with all the rest of the details at somewhat later point. So where we got with Will County DOT is, we initially approached them about a full-access cut on Moni Manhattan Road, and they said, due to the spacing between the off-ramps on 57 and the existing light on Ridgeland Road, it just doesn't fit their requirements. The village has taken upon themselves to try to convince the county otherwise, and they've actually escalated it to the Illinois Department of Transportation, and they've been, actually been doing quite successful in trying to keep that ball rolling and ultimately to get a full-access cut where we're showing that right-in, right-out access cut. Where we're at is, we're trying to get this process moving sooner with Thorntons so that this property doesn't sit here for another couple of years while the village and, you know, LFI and Bluestone all work collaboratively to persuade Will County and IDOT for the full-access cut, which I believe will benefit both our property and LFI's property to the south. Which leads us to, so the right-in, right-out that we're showing would provide both autos and trucks access into the site. And then on Ridgeland Road, we're proposing two full-access cuts. One is dedicated for autos only, and then one is dedicated for commercial vehicles and trucks only. And that's important for Thorntons, which is, while they, while they provide the diesel, they're very consumer-focused, are very much focused on the automobile clientele. And they believe it very strongly that the trucks and the cars need to be separated upon exiting, you know, due to the queuing and that people just, you know, feeling a little bit intimidated as they're trying to exit, whereas when they're entering the facility, you know, the cars are moving and you're not stopped right behind the trucks. So we've reached a point with staff respectively, fully, but going back and forth on this, on the proximity of the access cut to Moni Manhattan Road and the proximity to access cuts and where they are in the future long plane growth of the village. So where we've gotten is, you know, we're still pursuing the two access cuts. Staff disagrees that we should have two access cuts on reasons alone. Our client, Thorntons, they're on the other end of that. They feel absolutely adamant that in order for them to move forward with the project that they need these two access points, otherwise it's going to significantly diminish the volume of fuel they can to get a reasonable return on this investment. So we came here tonight to listen to you, see if you had any initial inputs so that we could continue with this process. One of the things that Mr. Wallace, since we've met and even since we discussed earlier this week, is one of the things that we've considered is, on Ridgeland Road, we would be willing to consider changing that to a restricted right-in, right-out access once we are able to obtain a full access on Moni Manhattan Road. And what that would allow us to do is to start constructing this project sooner while, like I said, we all, we all reached the same common goal at the end.
Thank you, Mike. Please stay up there in case the board members have any questions. Everything that has gone before the board has been represented very well and truthfully. But I do want to point out that this is not the original site plan that was proposed. Initially, the southern access point on Ridgeland Avenue was actually closer to the intersection. So there has been some movement on behalf of the developer in Bluestone to move that southern access point, I believe it was about 55 feet or so to the north, further to the north. However, it is still, staff and our professional advisors, engineering advisors, that that southern access point is still too close to the intersection. We have had Will County weigh in with us, although they have no jurisdiction over that, they just have weighed in through our engineering firm and are in agreement that it's significantly close to that intersection. We understand the reasoning for separating the auto traffic and the truck traffic. We are concerned, the staff is not only looking at this development, we are looking at future developments. So we're trying to take care of or take into consideration future traffic concerns, future access points to the, to Ridgeland Avenue. We have the west side of Ridgeland that has yet to be developed. We have south of Moni Manhattan on the southeast quadrant that yet has to be developed. So those are where our concerns are, is that staff is taking a little bit more of a global look as opposed to a site-by-site operation. And that is really how we have arrived at our opinion and our, somewhat of our impasse at this point. So because staff is not the final decision-makers, we are not elected in this municipality, that is why it is before the board. It is our staff's duty to bring it before the board and offer the opportunity of the developer to make a presentation on their behalf and justification for why they're requesting what they're requesting.
Trustee Wallace, what are, excuse me, you're not like, Administrator Wallace, what is the distance on that south end of the entrance? I can't read this.
Yeah. Mike, can you tell me that?
About 295 feet.
Is that to the, to the southern entrance?
Southern, yeah, center line of Moni Manhattan to the center line of the southern entrance, correct?
How many?
295.
No, not a separate turn lane, correct?
Well, in the, in the development of Ridgeland Avenue, you can faintly see some lanes of traffic there. Turn lane is represented there. It will be required. And the one thing I do want to point out is that, please understand that that measurement that was just given is from the center line of the intersection. There's, that intersection protrudes, you know, pretty far north there, so.
The existing wetland that's there, what would be the disturbance that could we, is it just a financial decision that you don't go a little further that direction to put the entrance to the car? I understand why you want the car and truck separate. Most, if you go up to the pilot station in Wilburton, they've done the same thing, they have a similar issue. They have a right-in, right-out lane on the main road, and then they have something like this on the other road, but they have a lot longer distance between the road and the turn before you can do that. And that's, that would be my concern as well. I would tend to agree. What's a recommended distance that the engineers have asked for?
Well, we have our engineer here tonight that could really give a professional answer to that. It's usually to take it out of the, out of the stacking lane, the turn lane, the angle of that. Jeff, if you want to step up and answer that. And the other thing that I would like to say is that there was a proposal, just, you know, an off-the-cuff, to have a further north entrance that would come through the wetland. And the reason that was not, and then eliminate that southern entrance. And the reason that isn't before you tonight is simply because there wasn't enough time to do some due diligence on behalf of the developer to see if that was even feasible. So it would be unfair for him to comment on that.
Yes, that would be, for the record, Jeff Cory, Jeff Agan from Pennsylvania. The recommendation would be to move a full access north of the stacking left-hand turn bay for the southbound Ridgeland that would make the left-hand turn onto Moni Manhattan Road. You have cars coming around, they get right-hand turns off of Moni Manhattan Road to the north, and you've got trucks that could be stacking, especially we've already seen a lot more additional traffic just in Amazon and, you know, the plan is to continue to grow the area as we see more traffic here.
Yeah, I mean, that's become the go-to road for employees leaving Amazon. They go down to the next exit and get off at the University Park or get on at the University Park, so it's going to be heavy traffic. And if we go with the spec building and they fill that building up, that LFI wants to fill up, we're just going to see all kinds of traffic, which means they're going to want gas, that's the good news. But I can foresee the same thing here. I don't see there's being a lot of room. And I think we're going to have to try to find a way to go a little longer on that car. Not personally in favor of a combined truck, car entrance, I think that's dangerous. And you're doing that on the Moni Manhattan side, is that correct?
So the Moni Manhattan is in-only for the trucks and cars?
Right.
And out-only for cars?
Yeah, no, I say that, and that concerns me all by itself because, again, you're going to have vehicles, trucks and cars trying to get into there from the exit there. That's going to be a problem, too.
Yeah, if I may on that, that typically works fairly well because they're both traveling at 30, 40 miles an hour in the exit, so it's typically a free-flow. We intentionally left the trucks run continuous straight where the cars will be able to turn off, preventing conflict points.
I have a question. You were talking about full access, the potential for full access off Moni Manhattan Road. That would require signalization?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't think. I would, I would be against that. Against it? Why? Just in a, well, because there's one already at Ridgeland and you have, you have the signalization at the, coming off the expressway, there's just another one. Yeah, I'm not against it, but I think it's a distance problem where that road is. I don't think you could put it in there and be safe with the, with the distance that's between Moni Manhattan, Ridgeland Road there to that, a lot, second light would be probably not very much distance. So I would agree on that regard, but I was just curious as to why you would. I'm just wondering if we could get another road in there?
If I may, Mr. Mayor. One of the thoughts of putting this full access point here is to relocate the existing frontage road that's on the southwest corner quadrant of the interchange. And that, that road would be completely realigned, it would run to the west and then pop up through the north through LFI's property and tie in at this new access point. That's already a pretty dangerous condition to, you know, the, your frontage road is essentially right off the ramps.
But you also said you were looking at 2,500 square foot restaurant, did I get that correctly?
Correct. It's on the, if you guys are looking at the plan, it's on the left side of the convenience store. You can see the drive-through lanes is the kind of upside-down horseshoe.
Oh, okay. The outlet, 1,000 acres, is that part of this project on the right? Oh, sorry.
You would like 1,000 acres.
I have a question. Has there, and this could be a really long question, but has there been a traffic study done on how many trucks are expecting along there because that, that's a huge concern, just the sheer volume?
That's an excellent question. And as part of the development, they will have to do a traffic study and probably have started on that. As, as it pertains to the potential full access on Moni Manhattan and additional light, IDOT and the county will require a comprehensive traffic study that would encompass a greater area. We have just recently learned that that area for that type of study would roughly be from I-57 on the east to our village limits on the west, to Lakeway Drive on the south, and to Drolly Road on the north. But that is working at a different speed than this traffic study would be.
And if we do have a signal, who would pay for it? If we do, if there is a signal and that becomes full access, who pays for it?
Initially, that would be part of the development costs.
Thank you.
Yes.
I almost don't want to say what I'm going to say, but I have to say this. Since becoming mayor, I realized, it's okay, David. How important Ridgeland Avenue and our overpass is, they're both inadequate. We are on high priority for a correction there, but we know how our state moves at a stale pace. So I'm talking about something that could be a couple of years from now, which does you no good, but they, I made them aware. I know I opened up the eyes of the people with IDOT of the problems we could have, and that was just with Amazon coming. So this just further, when I go to more meetings, and tell them what's going on. So that doesn't help you right now, Mike, okay? I wish you did, okay? I got a bump in the road fixed in about three hours. How about that? Yeah, right.
Michael, I have a question for you. So this doesn't have to do with roads per se or the entrances, but the, the truck entrance off Ridgeland Avenue, trucks entering, and they go down a little, on my, on my drawing, a little slot, and then are they expected to make a 180-degree turn into the fueling area? Is that, am I looking at that correctly?
That's correct.
And there's enough room to do that?
Yeah, there's plenty of, plenty of room for those guys.
Yeah, I've been at few Thorntons stops. Are all of your places truck stop combination like this size? Are they all combination?
They run everything from a little five pumper all the way up through the truck stops.
Right, well, no, I know that, but the size, this size of our trucks, are these, this size where they include trucks?
Oh, for the, for Thorntons truck stop operations? Yeah, yeah, I mean, more or less.
Any idea what your volume of trucks you expect on a daily basis to go through the areas?
Let me guess on that.
400,000 gallons, perhaps?
Yeah, I have to back on the math, but yeah, 400,000 gallons.
200 trucks. Do you, do you expect no overnight parking, I would assume?
No, there are potential.
So there would be potential overnight parking, is that correct?
Real quick, I'd like the trustees to realize that if you look at the scale of the drawing, 20 inch equals 40 feet. So that's, you should have brought the whole drawing.
I got a little.
I might add just for two minutes. My name is Rick Clay. Mike and I are partners at Bluestone Single Tenet Properties. And to your point, Mr. Mayor, about the traffic condition. So what I can tell you from firsthand experience is development begets development. So we had a project in Shanahan at I-55 and Route 6 back in 20, we started that project in like 2012. And at the time, their ramp was worse than yours. Their configuration of frontage roads was just abhorrent. They were 50 feet apart from the ramp, so you come up the ramp, you come out the frontage road, and the car that wanted to go right was 50 feet from the car that was going left. And the improvement was not on the eight-year plan for IDOT, which means it wasn't going to happen for 15 years. We got involved, we proposed this development, it's actually a Thornton Commercial Fueling Center. And we proposed this development and working with the village and some of the lobbying consultants we had. We got the project not only moved up from not on the eight-year plan, then it moved to the three-year plan, and then it was expedited to the one-year plan, and construction's underway right now. So sometimes development begets development, and you can, for a variety of reasons. So one of the things we agreed to do in that project was, we took over the relocation of one of the frontage roads that was really the biggest problem for IDOT. So in exchange for that, IDOT moved it up the list. They worked with the village, the state senator, and the people that we had engaged. And that Thornton store's been open now for seven months, eight months, yeah? And it's one of the highest-volume units in the chain and is generating significant amount of tax revenue for the village of Shanahan.
Certainly loved what you said, okay? That tells me what negotiations and talking about things does, okay? Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that comment.
As, as we are here this evening, I think that Bluestone is certainly looking for some direction. Not an official vote, that is not why we're here, nor are we here Uh, not an official vote, that is not why we're here, nor are we here to negotiate any further in, in, uh, open board, but I do believe that, uh, they need to understand if there is hope for this project to move forward. Um, I believe that also maybe behind the scenes, we could investigate, ramp up a little bit of investigation of, of potentially a more northerly, um, entrance. It was, as I stated earlier, it was just, uh, the time constraints didn't allow for the engineering to even give it any consideration. Um, and, uh, you know, we, we, uh, staff has made it clear that the village of Moni is, is, would love to have this development, but it has to work for both parties, and that's what we're trying to achieve here.
Yeah, I would echo that. I, I think that, I mean, Thornton's is a well-known name, and I've used them quite a bit in the Chicago land area. I do think this looks like a good drawing project here, however, I would say the same thing when you go north on the roads, a little more. We've got to tweak some because, uh, we have to have safety first, and I'm concerned that that, the traffic lane for the cars, I agree completely with separate lanes, but I think that, that one, that southerly lane there is too close to the road.
I, I agree with Trustee Holston. I think it's a great plan, I'm excited about it. It's certainly something we welcome into the village, but I do have to send reservation. Safety first and, and just the sheer volume of traffic on there, um, I certainly recommend that we try and somehow move that further.
Anyone else have some comments about that? I wonder if we could, go ahead, David. So, go ahead. Oh, okay, go ahead. Anything else you'd like to say or anything? Thank you.
No, I appreciate the board's insistence. Thank you.
So you know, Mike, uh, he beat you 10 to 8. I was keeping score on your remarks.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hey, at this point, is there anyone else for open to the public? Yes, sir.
My name is Candiceika from, uh, from 5824 Roosevelt Street. I have a question about this. Was, was, um, 400,000, are they going to park trucks overnight? If so, how many? I mean, what is the, is there a provision for truck parking overnight? And 400,000 gallons of fuel, fucking how long? I mean, give me, you know, give me something to go by. Was that in a day, a week, or a month? I missed, I noted 400,000 gallons was, uh, mentioned, but I didn't get in what timeframe. The other thing was parking on, you know, truck parking. If we're going to be parking trucks at how many, how much space is readily available for it?
Yeah, they're only going to be able to park as many trucks as they have in the drawing, and it looks like they've got about two dozen for, that could spend the night. Typically, I mean, that's probably the same as you see in the pilot except for the extra lot over there. Pilots, a lot of pilots got a little more than that. But it's going to be limited to how many spots they have available. I mean, they have to be in a, in a authorized, but Thornton does a good job of controlling that, so does Pilot, you know, from that perspective.
I mean, you commented 400,000 gallons was merely an attempt to back into the number of vehicles that might be there because the traffic study is not complete at this point. So they, they don't have that information at hand, they're just trying to accommodate an answer. Um, and as far as overnight parking and the actual operations, as I said, we are in the early stages of negotiation. This was an early impasse that is why it's before the board, just for some indication. Um, we have, uh, much further negotiation to do, and as always, that is a consideration that if there is that type of, of overnight parking, that it is accommodated appropriately.
I know that is the technical word of the company. I, I'm familiar with Thornton, I've used them many times, especially the one in Plainfield on Route 59, but I just wanted clarification. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. I think. No one else for open to the public? If not, I'd like a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Yes, it's for, oh. This is for appointment, appointments and, uh, appointments of employment and compensation and specific individuals. I heard a motion that I hear a second and discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Raisit?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Anyway, move into executive session. Thank you all.